I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting in order and start with Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning.
Good morning.
Let's do our roll call to see who's out there. I believe there's one number on there where we don't know. And they're gone now. Okay. If anybody else pops in and you need a name, please let me know. Which one is it? I have a, what's that say? Ring M. 3? I got you muted. Give me a second. Now, now go ahead and speak.
Hi, this is Matt Ring with Nationwide.
Okay. Thank you, Matt. Do we have everybody else? I believe so. Okay, now I will go to the approval of today's agenda.
I'd make a motion to approve the agenda as presented today, Lance.
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is approval of minutes of 6:03, 2020.
I'll make a motion to approve the June 3, 2020 minutes.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is approval of claims for payment, 6:10, 2020.
I'll make a motion to approve the claims for payment as presented dated 6:10, 2020.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is utility permits. I have three.
I'd make a motion to approve utility permits numbered 26, 27, 28.
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Secondary roads. Taylor, what do you got for us?
We're done with the culverts on the Hubbard and Providence Blacktop. First thing we'll be moving to County S-75 by Witten. So expect that next week. And that one, the road will be closed for a couple of days. It'll be detourned into Corrady County.
Okay. And then next we have is an engine ordinance signs on County Highway S-75.
Yeah, so I didn't answer this. I believe they talked to Marty and Bruce. And then I spoke with Dave and Daniel. The city needs to pass an ordinance in our mind. Otherwise, how can he enforce it? They are also our only small city. We don't have an agreement with about who takes care of the road and the signage. So I don't know how you guys really want to proceed with it all. I mean, if they pass the ordinance, we don't have an agreement. Should we be putting the signs up for them?
If it's their ordinance, no.
Or if there is no ordinance yet.
Correct. There's none right now, yeah.
So they, but they, they have the authority to make their ordinance up.
Correct.
Okay. Or we could do that.
No, they have to.
I guess you could, but then, once you hit city limits, it wouldn't be enforceable unless they did as well, right? Did you question? Yeah, let's just let them do it. Yeah, if they're that concerned about you, one, they could be a big deal for them to pass it.
Okay.
But then, yeah, so back in '04, we didn't have agreement with all of the cities under 500 people, and they're the only one without it, apparently.
Okay. Maybe we should point that out to them again.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
And then it would be our responsibility. I have a copy here of the union one.
Well, we've brought this up before, engine ordinances. It's a good time to bring it up again, I guess.
For the whole county?
I've, I've had the request. I think another place had a request as well. I guess the one I had, they were more concerned after, after dark. They didn't really, they weren't so concerned during the daytime, but once at nighttime, they don't like engine brakes going off at all hours of the night next to their houses. So I think it's sometime we should probably bring this up and address it again.
How do you enforce it? How do you let everybody know?
And I know we talked about separate roads. We talked about doing it the entire county or just spot specific. So at some point, I'd like something brought to us. The one I had was the Alden, D-25 and the Alden Road. I forgot what used to be.
D-27.
Okay.
The north-south one.
Yep. That, that intersection, but...
Somebody lives right there, yeah.
But I know we had another one brought, and I don't remember where that one was.
It's been a little while. Yeah, I, you hate to pass a rule that's not enforceable or that people hope that's enforceable, but, you know, you have to have somebody sitting there all the time to actually enforce it, and it makes it very difficult. So without the collaborative efforts of law enforcement and commercial vehicle enforcement and the engineer's office, it, it's going to be tough to do, you know, proper enforcement.
Signage is my main concern. People underestimate how many signs we already have.
Right.
You want to add 1,000 more signs?
Right.
I don't know. If we're going to keep up with it.
I guess I would be spot-specific then.
Yeah, I, I don't know what the purpose would be if it's clear out in the middle of the country and not near a town. Of course, there are people that live in the country, but I don't see doing it county-wide. Because like you said, somebody's going to have to be sitting there to catch them.
Correct.
You know? So...
Or is it just a sign like everything else?
Maybe it's a discussion we can have another time.
Give me some ideas. Bring back to us about that. You've sent us some already, is what other counties were doing.
Yeah.
That was about a year ago. But let's, let's not let this die yet.
Okay. You just guys just specify if you want it spot-specific or the whole county and...
Spot.
Okay.
That's, that's mine.
I think so, too.
Okay. Anything else for us?
No.
Okay. Next I have is an appointment of the ex officio of the Conservation Board member. We just moved our ex officio to a board member last week, and now we have that opening again. I've talked to Al Kadoff. He was more than happy. He was a board member for 10 years, and he went off and he said he would do this audit. That's what you guys so choose.
Okay.
I, I think it would be good to have Al, just for the continuity. I mean, he knows what's going on. So I would make a motion to appoint Al Kadoff as the ex officio Conservation Board member.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is approval of South Central Iowa Workforce Area Chief Elected Official Shared Liability Agreement. This is the agreement between the two regions combining us, which we're being mandated to do. We've all agreed to already do this once, but this is the...
Final consolidation efforts, right?
I hope it's the final one, yes.
For this year. Okay. I would go ahead and make a motion to approve the South Central Iowa Workforce Area Chief Elected Official Shared Liability Agreement as presented.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
B.J.
Aye.
Renee.
Aye.
Lance.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is a receipt of an animal feeding operation construction permit, 110 Pork Shop Site, Section 6 of Alden Township. This is a single building of 4,800 to head. It's a new building.
I'd make a motion acknowledging the receipt of animal feeding operation construction permit, 110 Pork Shop Site, Section 6, Alden Township.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we can set time and date for the public hearing on 110 Pork Shop Site, Section 6 of Alden Township.
I'd make, I'd make a motion setting the time and date for the public hearing of June 24, 10:00 a.m., Hardin County Courthouse, large conference room, or utilizing Zoom for the 110 Shop Site, Section 6 of Alden Township.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, I have as a recommendation to the DNR and the Animal Feeding Operation Construction Permit Application, Tribe B Site, Section 8, Section 8 of Alden Township. Jess, go ahead. We, we took questions. We've had some that were emailed to us to be sent along with any recommendation that we make.
It's Ferris first, right?
No.
Oh, it's Tribe B.
Tribe B.
All right. So a couple of the concerns that we had for the Tribe B site were regarding the composting structure and whether that should be included in the construction design statement. That's not typically something that's included in that section in the application. It just says on the matrix item that it has to be included with the construction permit application, but the matrix is part of the application, so I think that it's sufficient for them to have what they had included in the spot that they had included it. And then they had also moved their building, so I believe they need to, you know, get the points for the composting. They also greatly increased their description of their composting structure, which was appreciated. And then the other concern for Tribe B was that they had moved their building 15 feet east, which was good because they were able to obtain more points for the residence setback. But that does put them within 40 feet of that lesser amount of points. And I believe that if it's within 40 feet, it should be surveyed, but since they still would have obtained 400, at least 440 points with getting the composting points, they were going to pass anyway, even if we reduce them to 25 points for item one. So I didn't see a reason for them to need to survey for item number one to obtain 45 points. So even if we assume that they only got 25 points for item one, that still put them over 440 points. So I would recommend that you approve the Tribe B site application.
So along with that, we'd, we'd point out the fact that the survey is not needed and those points are not recognized?
Yeah, I just, I just assumed as far as points went, that they had the lesser amount of points since there was not a survey done. But like I said, that still put them over 440 points.
Okay. Okay. So I would make a motion to approve the recommendation to the DNR on the Tribe B Site, Section 8, Section 8, Alden Township.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is the recommendation to the DNR on the Animal Feeding Operation Construction Permit, Ferris Pork Site, Section 16 of Ellis Township.
Okay, so the, one concern we got about the Ferris site was the distance from the private well and how it should have been measured. I never cease to be confused by this question, because it seems like I get a different answer every time from the DNR. But I emailed Cindy Garza, this wouldn't, even if they measured it wrong, they still would have had 440 points, over 440 points. But Cindy Garza did say that the separation distance for the private well should be measured from the proposed structure, so that would allow them to take the points for the private well setback. So I think that was the only concern that there was from anybody about the Ferris site. So I would, that puts them still at 520 points. So I would recommend that you approve the Ferris site application.
Okay. I'd make a motion approving the recommendation to the DNR on Animal Feeding Operation Construction Permit Application, Ferris Pork Site, Section 16, Ellis Township.
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I just want to thank Jessica for making sure she used all of her points of contact and experts to come to the conclusions that she has.
Any other discussion? Hearing no more, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next I have is the approval of the Medicare Supplement Benefit through IGHCP. And this is what Becca sent to us.
I would make a motion approving the Medicare Supplement Benefit through IGH, IGHCP as presented by Becca.
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is adopting the coronavirus-related distributions with Nationwide 457 Plan. I have Matt up here. Can we unmute him?
Hey, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Matt.
So why don't you explain a little bit about this?
Yeah, so Congress, as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and the economic shutdown, if you will, they passed earlier this year the CARES Act. And as part of the CARES Act provision, there were extended options to allow for withdrawals from 457 plans. The two primary options are the coronavirus-related distributions, or CRDs, and then an extended loan provision, or enhanced loan provision, if you will. And really, as, as far as it pertains to the county's plan right now, the only real impact is on the coronavirus-related distribution, because at this time, the county's program doesn't offer a loan. Not to say that you couldn't amend that in the future. The coronavirus-related distributions, I'll just refer to them as CRDs for short, kind of moving forward, allow participants in the plan to take up to $100,000 from their accounts or across all 457 plans that they might have, not to exceed 100% of their total balance. And they must self-certify that they meet at least one of the following qualifications. They themselves have been diagnosed with a COVID-19 by a test approved by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, or they have a spouse or dependent diagnosed with the virus, or they've been adversely affected by financial consequences. So in other words, maybe their employer has reduced hours, maybe they've been laid off or their spouse has been laid off for work because of the employer they're working for had to shut down for economic reasons, the state closing down businesses and things like that. So with this, they would be eligible through the CRD as kind of in partnership, what would be under ordinary circumstances known as an unforeseeable emergency or hardship withdrawal, to take money from the plan. Note 10% early tax penalty, that would be waived, and the income tax due would be allowed to be paid in equal installments over a three-year period, rather than being due in the year of the distribution. And there is an option, and we have some forms we're still kind of working on, that would allow them to repay the withdrawals back into the plan, exclusive of any sort of contribution limit that would otherwise be in place. Again, they'd be able to do that within three years. So in short, if somebody's been affected by COVID-19, either by obtaining it themselves or through economic reasons, this allows them to take money from the account and then repay it in the future if they wanted to.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
I will, excuse me, make a motion to adopt the coronavirus-related distributions with Nationwide 457 Plan.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Renee.
Aye.
B.J.
Aye.
Lance.
Aye. Motion carries.
Lance, I can't read the bottom comment. I think it's from Becca.
Yeah, it's about Cindy Allen.
Is she on the line? Okay, so we may want to go back to that regarding the Medicare Supplement Benefit through IGHCP.
Okay, let's, let's go back to that and...
Okay. She already disconnected.
Oh, she left? Oh, all right.
Okay. Well, then, let's move on to the COVID-19 update. Thomas, give us a second.
Am I unmuted now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, give me one second. I got to kill the other meeting I'm on. So we, Christie and I, or I mean, sorry, Rocky and I are working with nursing homes and getting their baseline testing started. And then we're still working on ordering PPE. I have a meeting tomorrow. We're looking at a regional stockpile of PPE for, toward the fall. Things are starting to look like state, at the state level, things are starting to kind of move back and centralize to Des Moines. I'm just on another meeting with the regional healthcare partners, and the information that we've been getting from the Regional Medical Coordination Center is now being pushed back to Des Moines. And so the discussion I had with Director Flynn the other day was that it looks like the proclamation may be coming to an end as far as a lot of the stuff that's been limited. And when that, if that proclamation comes to an end, then the PPE that we've been getting from the state is completely shut down, because the state won't be purchasing any more PPE. So that's what we're working on right now, is looking at what regionally we can get what we've already ordered. So I took the average, excuse me, I took the average from all of the healthcare facilities that have ordered over the last three months, and that is our regional stockpile. It probably will be stored here at the EMA building, as there hasn't been anybody stepped forward for District 1 to, to stockpile that in a, in a central location, because nobody has that big a warehouse, and they certainly don't want to rent warehouse space. So our counts kind of leveled off. We had a big surge over the weekend for some reason, and now we're kind of leveled off again. But Hanson Family has been reporting that they've been doing anywhere from 10 to 30 tests per day at Hanson Family Hospital, and they are not a test Iowa site. That is, the people that are calling in and getting approved to be tested through the physician hotline that they have set up there, so...
Is that why our cases have increased, is because of the more testing or increased testing, or...
Yes.
That's what I was guessing, but...
Yeah. And we don't have, excuse me, we don't have any direction on where those, where those positives are at. The only way that public health is getting those positives now is by a ZIP code. So there's some question in whether all of those are actually Hardin County, because the ZIP code, say it's a Union ZIP code or a Witten ZIP code, Garden City, those are all on the county line. So if you have that ZIP code, you still physically could be living in the other counties, and it's reporting to Hardin County. So Rocky was trying to get that straightened out, but this program that the state's using seems to be a little difficult to get the numbers to, to clarify. So we're working on that process.
Yeah, because I would imagine Iowa Falls and Ackley and Alden would all be the same, any of them that are on the borders there.
Yeah, anything, anything that has, that runs a ZIP code into the other counties, we have no way of being able to complete that.
Right. And it's the state that decides how they're going to report those, whether it's by...
Absolutely, absolutely.
Just by ZIP code.
Everything goes through the state, and that's collated and calculated out there and reported.
And then the question was, how come they're not reported by ZIP code?
They are reported by ZIP code.
They are. But I think she's saying why the county...
She wants to know by the public.
What?
I think she wants to know why the public isn't getting it by ZIP code.
Why isn't the public getting it by ZIP code, I guess, is the question.
It's the state's website. We don't have any control over that. That's an IDPH process, and we have zero control over how that website looks. Even as Rocky and Renee and Dave and I sit in here on Monday mornings, it's impossible for, for us to get down to the zero information.
Any, anything else for us?
No, that, I will update you. The Hardin County Public Assistance Grant Application is in, so expenses for opening county office buildings and things like that will be able to be submitted, and I'll be keeping track of some of that, that I've already spent and being pushing that over to Jessica Laura. She's got a special account set up, because that's the way that, that grants work, is we have to have an account line item. And so those expenses are being pushed back over to the county to put on their public assistance. And then I'm still working with the three grants through emergency management in how I continue to purchase supplies and things.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Thomas.
So from there, do we have any updates? Any other updates?
We don't.
Not that I'm aware of.
Let's go to public comments. Let's open it up to the people to be able to ask. They can unmute themselves. Donnie, Donnie, you had a question out there. You wanted to know which regions. We're Region 6, which is Tama, Hardin County, Powashik, and Marshall. The county were, or the other region, I don't recall what number it was, but it's Davis, Jefferson, Keokuk, Lucas, Mahaska, Monroe, Applesus, Van Buren, Wablo, and Wayne.
All right, thank you. I would also like to make a point with Thomas on this virus testing. The statement was made that, well, we have more positives because we're doing more testing. I would like to make the point that whether there was testing or not, those positives would still be there. And the fact that we know they are can only help the public. Just because you don't test does not mean they're, they are negative.
I agree. I guess I wasn't insinuating that.
Well, I have often heard people say, well, of course we have more positives, we're doing more testing. No, that is not the case. We are simply finding out about the positives because we're doing more testing. That's the point I would like to make.
Thank you.
Thomas? Thomas? Hello?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was on the phone to somebody that called in. What was the question on? My apologies.
My point was simply that I have often heard people say, well, we have more positives because we're doing more testing. My point is, whether we were testing or not, the positives would still be there. The testing only means that we are simply finding out about them.
That's correct. I guess my point in saying that is that, first of all, number one, I guess I need to back up, is that even though, even if we cut off testing, we still know that COVID's out there. And even if the proclamation ended today, the issue of infectious people and the way that people behave around other people as far as social distancing and the groups that gather, all of that is still an issue. The problem is, is that people think that the, the number of cases are increasing in the area, that the sickness is more pronounced in the area, and it's not. The only reason that it's more pronounced publicly is because the numbers are being found through the testing. But there are still plenty of people that are both symptomatic and asymptomatic that have the, have the virus. But the only way it's getting to the, getting out to the public is that it is through the testing. We still all need... We still all need to be very cognizant of the increased hygiene, hand hygiene, coughing into your arm, staying six feet away from people, things like that, no matter what the numbers show.
I would also like to point out that according to all the little charts and everything, 78% approximately of the positive tests in the state of Iowa are in people from the ages of 18 to 60. That age group tends to show fewer symptoms or no symptoms. However, unfortunately, 88% of the deaths appear to be ages 61 and over. I would also like to put out there that the younger people who complain about wearing masks, they may be asymptomatic. They are not protecting themselves, even if they don't have it. They are protecting their parents, their grandparents, and their grandparents' friends because that's the age group that is more likely to die. And I wanted to put that out there. A lot of people don't seem to be aware of it.
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments?
Julie Dunn.
Julie?
Okay, um, again, I want to come back to the point of the armed guard at the entrance of the courthouse. Defund that and redirect those funds to mental health. You say that the guard is there to protect of the pub, or to protect people, to keep people safe. How about treating people with mental and emotional issues before they become a problem at the door at the courthouse? Redirect the funds so they're actually spent to help citizens in this county obtain mental health treatment. Treat people. An armed guard is no substitute for mental health care, accessible mental health care. People need access to that before their behavior becomes a crisis, a danger to people in the courthouse. Defund that position and please redirect that money where it does the most good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Lance.
Donna?
May I say one more thing, please, on a different subject?
Yep.
Regarding measuring of separation distances, Iowa Code 567.65.11, however you say all those numbers. Measurement of Separation Distances, except as provided in paragraph 65.119F, the distance between confinement feeding operation structures and locations or objects from which separation is required shall be measured horizontally by standard survey methods between the closest point of location or object, not the property line, and the closest point of the confinement feeding operation structure. That is the closest point. That is not the newest. That is not the furthest. And that was my point regarding the well. It should be measured from the existing building, not the newest one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Lance, I do, but I, anybody else wants to go public first?
Okay. I'm not hearing anybody else that has a public comment. I will go ahead and go to Darrell.
I just wanted to publicly thank our local law enforcement agencies and the officers and the jail staff and acknowledge the manner in which they do their job professionally. The work is very dangerous. It's difficult and I just want them to know it's appreciated.
I would agree. Thank you, Darrell.
Agreed. Very much agree.
Oh, I have no other public comments. I will go to other business.
I just would like to offer a public commendation to Audger Laura and election, Deputy Election Commissioner Angela Silvee for the great job of conducting a very abnormal election. And I just want to thank Jessica and her staff for accommodating and our poll workers. Hopefully, we got, did we recruit a couple new ones this time too, so? Yeah, so just job well done, so thank you.
Any other business? Hearing none, I could ask for a adjournment or a recess.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We're adjourned.